Okay, so, um, let us call the December meeting. Oh, this is November, regular meeting on the agenda for us. No one called that. December meeting of the Northern Planning Commission of Water at seven thirty P M. On December fifth and, um, the all seven members of the Planning Commission are here present. We are joined by Chloe Moore from Government and the Planning Commission. And we are joined by one member of the public attending by Zoom. So, um, hopefully folks, we'll see how fast we can get to this agenda today. We don't have a whole lot, uh, to cover. Um, so we will begin with Chair's update. That we've updated, um, I'd like to report that our work on the five A and five B zoning ordinances on pause. Uh, because, uh, we will be waiting for the applicants for seven fourteen Montgomery Price House and for, two fifty, however, for the Cook property to present either to us or to council the current plans that they have so that we can more fully discuss the zoning implications of their projects. I know we've been working on those. But, um, um, it seems like it's at a point where we should really hear from them about what they do. Uh, and get some, some basic input about that a lot more. So I invited Mike Friedman to come tonight, but he didn't get his team together quickly enough to be here. So, um, we'll, we'll see what, what schedule that is. Um, I will say, um, we have one, uh, other development application, it's rather simple. It's the final plan for dirty to say mine, which you'll remember, it's either earlier this year or last year either. Which will be on our January agenda. So between those projects and, um, other matters, I suspect will be very busy beginning of next year. And I would like you all to anticipate that we might have to have one extra meeting or so at some point in the first couple of months of the year. Because of all these things that would be on our plate. But, um, as of now, we'll just set those aside. Is there any questions about that, about those, those issues or those projects? So second, um, um, I'd like to ask for a review of the, uh, November minutes. And I'd like to note that Adam has submitted corrected minutes for October, which I will repost on the webpage and replace the ones that were posted. So I'm sorry if my click not catching the update that didn't be made. But Adam, I appreciate your sending that and we will update that and send it off to grow the page. In terms of November though, would anyone like, did everyone have a chance to look at the November minutes? Anyone have any questions or comments or corrections to suggest in November minutes?
My comment is that they're extraordinarily complete. And I have no bones to be there for them.
That's definitely getting completer and completer each month.
No idea how hard it is to make it that short.
Come on, they do, they do. Okay.
I would have written you a shorter, a longer, no, a shorter letter, but I didn't have time. Said Mark Twain? Was it Mark Twain, some, somebody of equal stature.
It was Yogi Bear. I wouldn't write short letters anywhere they ever had time. Okay, um, if there are no comments, corrections, I'll ask for permission to approve the November minutes. That's good. Second. Yes, second. And all in favor of approving November minutes as submitted?
Oh, Adam.
Thanks to Adam, our secretary, they passed the exams. Uh, the next kind of announcement update business is just to confirm our proposed meeting date scheduled for, um, twenty twenty three, which I sent around to you all. I emailed, um, there are a few quirks in the schedule because, um, the first meeting of January is a six, is the bro, is, is the first business day of the year and Borough Council wanted to reorganize. Or might be reorganizing that night, I don't know. I'm proposing delay that meeting for a week. Monday, March thirteenth, actually, I will be out of town the first Monday of March. And so I'm asking for the meeting to be postponed second Monday. July fourth is on a Tuesday this year. So I'm anticipating Monday's not going to kind of be a day that we want to meet. July third, so it compares when we meet July tenth. August, no meeting. Uh, September eleventh is the second Monday, so we go with Labor Day, Jip Day. I checked the calendar and it's not conflict with holidays that I appreciate that, thank you. Um, and then November and December as, as usual. So that, those are a few aberrations from our normal pattern. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that?
I have one.
Yes.
Which affects the H R. There's a conflict because the H R usually meets on the second Monday. So I was thinking to just send out the mail.
I'm actually speaking on behalf. God, Dennis. So we got, he said, have you, they got, apparently H R got moved once before.
Yeah.
Because of us.
Yeah, then we go on Tuesday.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I just met him mentioning it, I don't know which way.
Okay, well, I will say, I did vet this with the Borough Office and they said there were no conflicts. So I apologize to the H R for that conflict, but I can't check with every board and commission. So I checked with the Borough Office.
The H R hasn't submitted the date yet.
Well, I don't know. So I guess what I'd like to do is, is at least for now, are these okay with us? And I'm gonna check with Dennis or the Borough Office about how to manage that conflict. But that aside, are these days okay with everybody? Okay, we will, uh, check into that, uh, and I'll ask Dennis. Uh, he'd like to, to handle that or find some other workaround, which if necessary, we will talk about. But I, so they need the second Monday, so we need the night. Yeah, so we'll have to decide.
Yeah. I'll just mention that the first Monday in April is the National Planning Conference, which is gonna be in Philadelphia. So I don't know. I don't know how, or I, or planning to be or anyone else to be at the National Planning Conference. I did submit one, actually I did, so the ones we don't believe about Monday night, I probably didn't get it at all. But, um, it's unlikely to be a conference, but for me, I just.
I had, I'd considered that, um, and I decided that no matter what I do at the conference, I'll probably want to be home Monday evening. So, yeah, otherwise I'm just feeling a work day. I had thought about that, but I did. April third is the week of spring break. And so I won't be here. So, um, is, is that enough of a reason for anyone to suggest that we move April thirty, April ten? I don't know what conflicts it may be.
It doesn't make any difference.
Okay. Let's, let's, um, one thing maybe April thirty, April ten, that's another. Leave it there, but let's check with the, uh, the rest.
I would note that there are an unusual number of Monday conflicts out. Suggesting that maybe there's something wrong with Monday.
It's a common day for a holiday.
Yeah.
Should meet on Tuesday.
There's nothing sacred about Mondays, that's all I'm saying. I consider a global adjustment.
You know, one slight reason I prefer Mondays is because if the Borough Council's meeting on Thursday, that gives me one more day to every.
Yeah. Right.
That happens every once in a while, but I think I'm good. Okay, well, let me, um, let me, let's leave it this, these days could work for us, but we do need to check with Borough Office. Cause it appears there's, there's a lot of conflicts emerging. And, and maybe one of us goes on the second Monday instead of the first. From now on, um, so we'll, we'll talk to her on September. Okay. Um, so that's my, uh, those are my reports, announcements and updates. So let us move then, um, to zoning amendments. Um, we have, um, two topics that I'd like to discuss. Uh, one is the, um, zoning amendments that are proposed in order to make the zoning code consistent with, with the new S A L D O, which has been advertised, and I guess Council's gonna vote this month on adopting it. So we may actually have a brand new subdivision ordinance, uh, leaving in the next year. I should, I should say, by the way, parenthetically, um, the, the, um, Montgomery Avenue and the Cook property projects, if they require new, new applications would come in over this new S A L D O. So the first application would not be an old fashioned type of sketch plan. It would be the newly envisioned Charette style tentative sketch plan, optional tentative sketch plan potentially. So we may get a chance to test that out. Think on it rather than. So anyway, um, Chloe, would you like to, uh, walk us through the S A L D O really concerning them quickly?
Yes, just briefly, I will say that this is focused on things that are to make the zoning consistent with the new S A L D O. But there were a few very small rabbit holes that got added in here. You know, other zoning trouble was definitely some of that got stepped in here, um, also. So, um, there was just some clarification of like, oh, by the way, thank you to those who emailed me comments. I really appreciate you taking a look at that. Um, this, that's just clarifying. So we added a section to the zoning about bicycle parking because that's gonna go near the section where vehicle parking does. We have to renumber the tables that come after that. So it's new number, table number nine or 10. Anyway, so the tables that were numbered after that, I'll have to actually choose one higher. And I think I found what I believe to be a typo in another table number reference. But through the new part, um, this section related to, uh, lots that are in the historic district, overly district and have a contributing resource. The primary front, frontage line, um, for new buildings to be from table, what will be now table fourteen, which was table thirteen. But then it references table three, and I think it meant to reference table thirteen. So changing that one to fourteen too. That was, I don't know if you want to double check that and make sure that's correct, that would be helpful. Um, but okay, what's actually important here? There is a passage that we discussed previously that I also discussed with your solicitor. And my proposal is to just eliminate it. This is something, the reason this got lumped into here is because it referenced the tentative sketch plan. So I looked at it and I said, okay, well, why does it reference the tentative sketch plan? It should definitely change to something else. Um, and we decided, yes, it should be changed to reference the preliminary plan. Because now that's now the first required plan in a S A L D O. It relates to having a master plan for multiple principal buildings on a lot.
Here, just kind of refer awareness sixteen.
So it's, if you're looking at the document, I sent it's on page two. Uh, it's two B near the top. And I do, I know, you know, maybe if you're looking at it on paper, that's great or on your screen, but it's also up on, uh, this right into.
All right.
Um, so the paragraph had said, when a master plan is submitted showing multiple principal buildings to be constructed in phases under the master plan, exterior architectural renderings, elevations and exterior building material descriptions of the structures to be constructed pursuant to a master plan shall only be required to be submitted with the preliminary plan when such structures will be approved concurrently with the preliminary plan submitted. And there was various discussion, we talked about this one other time, about what does this even mean? What's the intention of it? I spoke with your solicitor. It seems like no one feels like there's a very important message that's being conveyed here. So my current thought is to just remove that. If someone thinks there's something important that we need to convey with this paragraph, please describe it to me and I'll try to reword it so that it is, uh, easier to interpret.
Well, what it means is a master plan, um, as conceived in this part of zoning code would include multiple buildings in a lot, which may be built over the course of several years. And not all at once. Uh, and what this means is, um, the only, the only buildings for which at that moment you have to show architecture elevations who are the ones that are going to be approved at the same time. You do not have to show architecture elevations for a building you might put five years from now. You would, you would show labor. That's what that means.
Okay, is that, um, is that something you would like to be in the code?
Yeah, because what the, the idea was, we didn't, and I think I recall talking with the commission about this is, is we didn't want to require people to show architectural elevations for buildings that weren't gonna be built anytime soon. Because that was, who knows, you know, maybe they, over the course of five years, they'll decide they would have built mixed use instead of apartment or then all their work is wasted. So that, that's, that's why that's there. It's why that was there, I mean, it was approved. Does anyone remember that?
Timely.
Yeah.
I think that's a generous provision.
Yeah.
On the part of the, on the part of the Borough toward a developer who's doing a pretty complicated project. Uh, and requiring, eliminating the requirement to gaze into a crystal ball is not a reasonable thing, I would say.
Yeah, so that's what that was for.
Okay. That would, that would then conflict what's in the S A L D O because they're, but that's okay. Because they might, they might need a waiver from, um, the requirement in the S A L D O to submit architectural elevations, which I think.
Well, I can say is that's why that was there. It's a really good reason for it.
Great. Your solicitor, I think, has a different interpretation of what that paragraph meant. But anyway, it doesn't matter. I understand what you're saying, that makes sense to me. So the idea is they do have to submit a master plan. And generally speaking, the master plan should have, be the requirement, have all the requirements of a preliminary, preliminary plan and contain architectural elevations, et cetera. However, if some of the buildings are not intended to be built anytime soon, the detailed architectural elements are not required at that time.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense. Please for that, that question. What else is important here?
Jim, did you look at the bicycle park that was added?
Uh, this?
Yeah.
I did not.
Why don't you just give me real fast, cause I know you're working on it.
Bicycle parking is, uh, starts on page four. Um, and the overview is that there's short term and long term bicycle space, parking spaces. And the details of what a short term bicycle, bicycle parking space and a long term bicycle parking space are, are in the S A L D O. What a short term is like a bike rack outside and long term would be bike lockers or a bike room inside of a building or inside of a parking garage. Um, and the zoning would spell out the minimum number of bicycle parking spaces required. And then the design is described in the S A L D O's about what they would look like and how, how that would, how that works. So there's a table, this table of bicycle parking standards is correlated with your, it's the same use column along the left hand side that is contained in your current zoning ordinance for vehicle parking, car parking. Um, but then of course the requirements are a little bit different here for bicycle parking. And the minimum number of electrical, electric vehicle parking spaces is here with the standards and details in the S A L D O. Important. This is just a direct typo, it's just updating the table numbers. This is basically changed to refer to the S A L D O for street sign sidewalk with, et cetera.
Why did, why did you eliminate expression line, page line?
Um, that was not used in your code. The term was in South Family or in code.
Without bigger reason. I wonder why it's not.
Maybe we should quickly write something.
And I think we talked about this a little bit before, but the word elevation was used in three different ways. And so we're trying to use the term architectural elevation to show like a different building and, uh, topographical elevation.
So that's been fixed?
Yes.
Oh, you have to get architectural vision, okay, good. I mean, everything else to me just seems like clarifications, typos, re, re, redoubling, so.
And then there's, there's a few changes to some of these definitions that Kevin Walsh requested, asking, can you please add a sentence that's supposed to be in the definition? This is, um, for example, frontage line. A line parallel or tangent to a street located a distance equal to the required setback. And then he asked, please add, in the case of an existing building, the frontage line shall be at the existing building beside facing the street. Because there was this issue, confusion of if it's a land development, but there's an existing building that's staying on the lot, there, it doesn't make sense to have the frontage line be equal to the required setback because that's not really relevant. If there's, we're talking about an existing building that's not moving anywhere. I guess there could be an existing building that is moving, but, uh, that's pretty rare. Happening. That's, I actually hadn't thought about that. What if they're physically moving building?
It sets up a lot of other questions, but it doesn't change the definition. Okay, are there other important things that Kevin suggested that you think we should be aware of?
I think so.
I have a, I have a question about, a few questions.
Yeah.
Um, so I think you're trying to differentiate civic use and institutional use.
Right.
But.
They have different parking requirements in your ordinance currently. Uh, civic use and institutional use in the, in this table. The.
It's just the definition's the difference, that's all I have a question about.
Right.
So, um, under the definition of civic use, it's public, public governmental use such as a park, library, municipal offices. Small question is, considering a park a use is interesting. And I'm kind of wondering whether that cascades into any unseen problems. Because a park is not something we regulate through our zoning code. So we don't have a park in the zone. Do we only allow parks in, in zoning community? I don't know, but adding park is kind of interesting and I'm curious whether it causes any problems. But it also says the also institutional use and I'm wondering why. So institutional use is a public or private or not for profit organization? And it, properties in municipal ownership are excluded. So first of all, what kind of public use could it be that's not municipal? Do you mean like a county thing or a state thing or federal government or a?
Um, I think like a school.
Okay, so.
You might consider that a public, I think I would consider it a public use, but it's not municipal, you know, barely.
What's his organizations though? All public, private or not for profit organizations, not uses. So that's also kind of quirky. Is, is the use a use by virtue of the organization that creates it? Or is it a use, the use by virtue of what actually happens? So that's something. And then, then it's not just the entity or the activity. Then the third part of the definition says properties. So properties in municipal ownership are excluded from institutional use. So I think that needs a lot of scrambling. Are we talking about properties, entities or uses? I was curious about the frontage definition, the area between the front building facade and vehicular lanes. But I'm curious, usually our, our zoning, um, is measured from the curb line, right? So why wouldn't you say the curb line?
That's what's existing in your zoning.
Okay. Well, don't we have the ability to make little fixes like that? If it, if it in fact is useful? I don't know if it is useful.
I don't really like that term either, but.
Because it's parking a vehicular lane, it's a sidewalk. Yeah, I don't know, so.
Curb line is defined, I believe, in your ordinance and used in other places.
Uh, I have a question about curb line. A line formed by the face of the existing curb opposite of the side facing the cartway. Isn't the side opposite facing the cartway the side that faces the sidewalk? Which usually isn't a face, it's just like a flag with the sidewalk.
I didn't change anything about this other than.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. I mean, if we need, if we should change it, let's change it. And the reason this is in here is because throughout the ordinance, curb line is one word, but in the definitions it was two words. So I just proposed removing the space between curb and.
I'm sorry, see like I read it, it's in a different font, so I kind of just let you have it.
No, that's okay, it's fine. I'm happy to take a look at it and I'm happy to change it if it makes sense. This is, this is a fine time to do that. I'm just letting you know that I didn't actually touch that definition at all.
Yeah. You can say the edge of the existing ground. Anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't want to pick on things that.
I didn't write that, but I don't mind working on it if that makes sense. If it would be better changed, let's change it.
Then under mixed use building?
Yes, that was one you and I went back and forth about. So let's, let's all look at that one for a minute, because it would be good to get this right. Well, it'll already be improved.
Okay, well, I'll say for the record, I think you got it right, but that part of it belongs in the code, not in the definition. Like everything after, um, potentially after, at least when you shall be located vertically above another or including that. That could all be included. I mean, that's, that's not defining it, that's like describing. In any case, some of this, these five lines, I think, would be better in the actual page that describes the metrics of mixed use as opposed to the definition. Cause I don't think you should look to a definition to find out what the urban design properties are. But I think, I think it's right.
Okay.
I just don't think, I think I would.
I'm pleased, so that, that question.
Let's ask others.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Or are they, that's kind of the way this is kind of written.
What would this do to, oh, first, like drive in parking that supports a residential use on the above, above ground floor? You know what I mean? Like, uh, there's drive in parking happening on the first floor, like happens at the old Rickles', you know, the new building on Rickland site, for instance. There's parking within the footprint of, and on the, uh, first level. Is the, is the parking on that floor considered residential use if it supports the resident on the second, third floor?
If it's only for residents, I would consider it accessory to the residential use. Which by the way, this is currently written, would be restricted to fifteen percent of the floor area of the first floor. So if that's not what we want, let's change it.
So parking is accessory in the same way that lobby and stairwell are?
That's my interpretation.
Okay. We might want to have a look at, I mean, we require, uh, parking for, you know, we, there's a certain parking formula we have. So maybe we should examine whether this squeezes out a required parking unintentionally. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So if that's, if that's the case where this would limit the parking to fifteen percent floor area of the ground floor, that you want to allow more parking than that on the ground floor. But part of the point of mixed use is that you want to have something else like a retailer, restaurant or something, um, on the first floor. What, do you want to set a percentage or a minimum square footage or something that would have to do with something that wasn't accessory to the residential use?
I think we already have rules for this. Uh, in the parking design section. In the parking design section, I think we have rules for parking. And so I would say that we would just need to allow that to occur. And we already thought this out, like you can't have parking within 40 feet in the building. So you have, I mean, it's in the parking design section.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I mean, is it necessary to articulate all of the potential accessories to the dwelling units when you say such as entranceway, lobby, or stairwell, but you don't include something like an elevator, which has a machine room, and it has a cab, and it has, you know?
Um, I think it's not necessary to mention every possible accessory use, but we could certainly add that.
I mean, the only reason I think it would be important to include that is for ADA, like, yeah.
Maybe it should be a broader term like the circulation areas.
Vertical circulation.
Yeah.
Which I don't get.
The definition of mixed-use building.
Uses accessory to the dwelling units such as will be, will now be defined as simply stairwell will be vertical circulation, start stairwell.
That 15% is new, isn't it?
Yes. Well, see, you suggested that, but I don't know if that's true. I think it might be.
Well, I think we, we talked about it.
Yeah, we, you and I went back and forth on this a little bit, trying to clarify what we wanted to allow. Right, so apartment spaces at grade underneath the building shall be set back at least 40 feet from the primary frontage line. So that's limiting there.
I kind of think if the maximum width is 12 feet, then I'm a self-regulate. Because I think the minimum width of a mixed-use building is...
I will say that in other code where I've seen it more common to either have a minimum percentage of the ground floor that has to be the non-residential use, or a minimum depth. Retail and restaurant uses would be a minimum of 30 feet usually, and recommended 40 feet from the front. But like deep.
We, we do have it's in 600 somewhere.
In the park, you're talking about for parking?
Yeah.
Right, so it does say apartment spaces at grade shall be set back at least 40 feet from the primary frontage line. But this would cover other things, like you couldn't also put too much of, like, a gym accessory to the residential or whatever else that wasn't parking.
Right. So I think, I think that the maximum width and the 15%, 15% may be generous, but it's those are okay. It's just that we allow for parking also, but the parking is constrained by these other rules that are in the parking design section. Which is why this belongs in the code, not in the definition.
I, I hear you on that. We can move it. So I'm just, I'm trying to think of a solution. I think what we're getting at is that everything that's accessory to the dwelling units that isn't parking, this fits okay. It's just the parking.
Right.
And so long as the parking complies with these other regulations that it has to be set back 40 feet from the primary frontage line, that it's okay if it takes up more than 15% of the first floor?
I think so, yeah. That's...
I don't know. I don't have a sense. I'm not sure it's enough. Depends on the building footprint. But I wonder if you, if you are kind of saying the wrong thing and should in fact be allowing a certain amount towards the other use rather than dictating how much circulation space you can allow. I mean, the other use should have more than X percent of the area to qualify.
The non-residential use?
Yeah.
Not counting parking?
Yeah.
Could you state it in terms of like front of the building, like, you know, like
Exactly.
Commercial frontage?
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole point, is to keep the parking behind, so...
But what if it's not a practical space, because they're too small? Currently, we don't allow parking within 40 feet of the front of the building. We already have that. 40 feet of the front of the building or coming from the front of the lot?
So in the case of the Ricklands building, it's from...
605, I think.
If you use Ricklands as an example, it's from Haverford?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not, I mean, we, we kind of, I think we figured out that that worked as long as the parking area was set back enough of a distance from the front of the building so that it was functional to be used for retail or commercial or whatever's allowed on the ground floor. That was fine. So I didn't think we, I don't think we thought about it in terms of percentages. So in a way, I kind of feel like we don't need to reinvent those rules. We made them. They're fine. The, the issue here, and I think we made the rule about 12 feet lobby, which is fine because we were thinking about the number of doors and spaces along Haverford Avenue and not allowing lobbies that took up too much space. We created that, that, it's great. So I think that rule is fine. The only issue is how do you limit other accessory uses on the ground floor? I don't think we have any problem with the lobby rules or the lobby rules. It's just like if someone wants to have other accessory units like, like a gym, or like, my God, I was in an apartment building in Philly and they have like pool tables, and they have fire pits, and they have coffee areas all on the ground floor of the building. So how do we, you know, that's, that's going way they build apartment buildings.
Which is fine if it's a residential building, but if it's a mixed-use building, you should allocate how much of the mixed use should be provided.
Then this is mixed use. This is what we're having.
Yeah, I know, I know, but rather than safe.
Yeah. So, so one thing we see is sometimes a minimum of 30 to 40 feet in depth, and a minimum of 50 to 75% of the front facade
Right.
must be the other use. So you could maybe go that direction. That's what you're saying, like it's set a minimum for
I think that's better. I mean, it's going to be hard to know how circulation's going to fit in otherwise. I mean, so much depends on the building.
Yeah, it does. And the site, it's hard to say, but you know, you don't want to get in a situation where your mixed-use building is something else.
Right.
Well, look at some mixed-use building. What's, what's, what do we expect to be on the first floor?
Non-residential use. Office, professional service, retail, light industries, civic or institution.
So their time was when we were trying like how to encourage retail on the first floor. Not some of those other uses.
Right, but those may be about something on like the side streets, like forests.
It's a slippery slope.
But I don't want to, I don't want to reinvent our whole downtown zoning for the sake of it. Those are the things we've agreed to. If we just said that the ground floor has to be 50% or more non-residential use?
Yeah.
Well, I was getting ready to say, how about if some of these non, some of these supporting players be in the rear rather than in the front? So if you've got, if you're in a, in a, in a mixed-use building that's commercial on the first floor, we want, we want something that enlives the street. I want to look in and see a pool table. I don't want to look in and see washers and dryers.
Why don't we say the first 40 feet have to be the mixed use? And after 40 feet, you have parking, you have pool tables, you have washers and dryers.
Of depth, 40 feet of depth.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And the only exception is the lobby or vestibular.
Right.
Which can be tiny.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we keep it the 40-foot rule and beyond, you have parking, you could have no room.
Right, exactly.
The things you have kind of in an apartment building.
Right.
Can I just vertical circulation go?
Well, that could be, that could be either in the back or it could be in the vestibular or the lobby.
Yeah, it should be in, yeah, that's what, I only ask because lobby.
The first 40 feet, so how is it, what's the language to keep the lobby in the first 40 feet?
15%.
Well, I think you can say something like from the front facade of the building, 40 feet in depth must be the...
Yeah, but if, what about the non-residential?
Non-residential use.
Right. The vertical circulation.
For the full facade with the exception of up to 12 feet for in width for a lobby.
12 feet for a lobby. Yeah. And quite frankly, if someone makes a lobby that's 20 feet, I'm not sure I worry about that too much. It's, it's more the width, street works, which is the issue.
Exactly. 12 feet in the width. I think the lobby can be as deep, it can go all the way to the back of the building.
Yeah.
And they can put everything in it.
I have to admit, I just don't understand where 12 feet comes from. Like, what is the base, basis of 12 feet?
We did a couple of things. One is we measured Haverford Avenue to kind of understand the widths of things, and also 12 feet seems to at some point, I think, seemed to be like a functional dimension for a entrance, a small entrance to a, a building on a, on a business street. It was enough to have an entrance
It's a maximum.
where you could put a door, a potted plant, and stairs, an elevator, you know, but not to take up so much of the space that would create a, that's where it came from. Believe me, we'll have a chance to open this up when we talk about this. Because I don't, tonight, this one, I...
So just to clarify, summarize, make sure I understand here, and we're going to leave what's here for the first sentence, A, B, C, D, and then the first sentence after that, at least one use shall be located vertically above the other. After that, I'm going to move this to section 502 of the zoning, which talks about the building type, mixed-use building, and already has some standards related to that. This is going to be worked into there. I'll make it make sense. And I'm going to adjust the language so that the primary building facade for 40 feet in depth from the primary facade and for the entire facade in width except for up to 12 feet for a lobby, has to be the non, a non-residential use.
But that's...
Permitting the zoning district, and I will just clarify that anything uses that are accessory to the residential use cannot be located in that area. Like your pool tables for residents.
Right. Your gym.
Your gym. You could put a pool table in the lobby, but it's... Okay, so that, that's, that'd be good, okay. Okay. Other questions?
I think critical.
Okay.
So I think the next step is then you will actually work with the solicitor to shape this up in their code, and then next time we'll see if this one is ready to be advertised.
Sounds good.
All right. Any other questions about the proposals?
If you look at it later and have some really insights, please let me know.
Okay.
I'm always happy to give them.
Look, so you're at the one-yard line.
That means, you know what that means, don't you? What does it mean?
Go on, which doors?
Quarterback sneak.
Quarterback sneak?
That's what it means.
It's up to you, Todd.
No, it's up to Jalen Hertz, my friends. Quarterback sneak, everyone, everyone knows that. You still can't stop it. All right. So next on the agenda is is a quick update on the green building special exception. We, when last we met, we left ourselves with the task of offline in a small group, talking more about the issue of the special exception that I proposed for people who were, or for property owners who were adding green building infrastructure that needed some kind of dimensionality. And we had long discussions about, about solar panels and trade-off between what might be considered to be the most efficient way of installing a solar panel versus the, the kind of knowledge built into the Form Base Code about the form, shape of houses and roofs that is appropriate for everything. I met with Jim, Dave, to, to talk about that a little bit. We agreed to bring back some ideas for you. So would either of you like to talk about where we landed on that? The idea that we need to get more info?
Yeah, we did get, I did get a little bit more info because my standing on the shoulders of my young son, who is not young anymore, lives in San Francisco and is doing, in the process of doing a, an extensive photovoltaic installation in his own house, which is out in the desert.
Can I, can I back up a second before you, because you have a lot of good information? So where we landed was, in order to understand whether it was there, there's some among us who feel very strongly that solar root, solar panels should really be applied flat to roofs or parallel to roofs, the way that our code is fine in terms of how it deals with solar panels. And so in order to discuss whether we need to change that, we need better information about what the real loss of efficiency is for solar panels that aren't mounted flat to roofs. Like, is, is there really a loss of efficiency? And so we, we thought we would come back and say we need to get more information about that. We did look some up ourselves, but Jim's son is installing some panels and working with engineers. Dave knows a, a person who, who works on this issue. I agreed to call the Lower Mary Conservancy and talk to their historic preservation team. They know about the trade-offs between solar infrastructure and preservation, which I haven't done yet, but you already have some information to bring to bear.
Well, it's, it's, it's an enormously complicated subject, but it all boils down to the happy fact that panels that are currently being developed and are currently on the market and are being developed are increasingly tolerant of being installed at angles other than normal to the, to the rays of the sun, like that. Which they used to be. It used to be that if your solar panel wasn't within a degree or two of normal to the angle of insulation, sun angle, you were losing tremendous amount of efficiency, and that's not true anymore, I learned. They are now quite tolerant of, of oblique angles. So the requirement, which, which was part of our thinking a number of years ago when we drafted the Form Base Code and talked about solar panels on roofs, is that the obvious benefits of having panels flat to roofs, I mean, parallel roofs, let's say, there are a number of benefits, and, and the, the current technology is supporting that. So the other benefits are that panels don't shade one another if they're flat to the roof. They're all in the same plane. They mimic the, they mimic the form of, of the building on which they are installed, which is, which is a distinct benefit from, from a form-based perspective. The roof is easier to maintain, much easier to maintain if, if the, if the panels are all in a plane. And the small, small diminution of, of panel efficiency is, I mean, it's de minimis these days from what I understand. I'm, I am one day into researching this and I'm by no means an expert, but that's the that's the gist of what I learned. And I, and I think we would be well served to get a more an opinion from someone who was, you know, whose opinion is unimpeachable. That means we can't use Krasner, I guess.
I mean, I would just, in support of what you just said, I would agree with you that the technology has advanced. I mean, they even have, and there's a house here in Narburg that has the solar shingles, which are also obviously, you know, parallel to the roof slope. The question would be, is it restricted only to being parallel? Are there any exceptions where, you know, we would... Are there any exceptions where, you know, we would say the performance is so exemplary? Or, you know, like, what would the situation be? I know that there is a Google Solar Map where you can look to see what the, you know, what the viability of a solar panel is in a roof, anywhere here in Narbor, or, you know, California, or anywhere. So, that might also help inform. But I think, Todd, what you said about contacting Lower Mary Conservancy to see what the general trend is right now, not that we have to follow it, but just to get an idea of what's the baseline.
The map you're referring to, I know you've shown it to me.
Yeah.
But what are the metrics that they use to determine the effectiveness of your lot for solar?
It's been a while since I looked at it. It was brought to my attention by...
Let me revisit my notes. I think it's just about shade cover. That particular map is about trees.
Yeah, I think actually, yeah.
They don't take into consideration the slope of your roof.
What about the orientation of your structure?
Orientation to us, but not?
It takes no count orientation.
Orientation, yeah, because it's, there's a light side and a dark side.
But you're saying pitch.
Pitch doesn't, isn't considered.
So it's like two minutes, like five, two, two.
I mean, it gets you, it gets you probably there.
Not a part way, it gets you part way.
But we could, you know, that's something that could be like a task.
So is it generally agreed that if we're jumping into any proposal, we need to get more information?
I think the panels are looking better, too. I mean, they're all black now. They're not, they don't, they usually have the silver around them, so they don't show up quite as much. But I think, another question would be, do you want them on the front of the house? Like, is it, if you had a beautiful slate roof and they start putting solar panels across them, how do you feel about that?
Well, most people are removing their slates. They're loving the asphalt shingles.
Yeah.
How do I feel about that?
Well, see, that's the thing. I mean, should we weigh in on that?
Sell me a house with slates and I'll keep them.
I'm not gonna pay for them after slates.
Let's not get into the issues associated with maintaining a roof with solar panels on it. Because that's a whole other subject.
But Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, our code right now does not make a distinction between front and back.
I don't think it does. And to me, that maybe is even a bigger issue than which angle they are.
I think we can't deny, in this day and age, not just I would like to put my foot down and say the front of every house must look like it did in 1920 when it was built. We really can't justify standing in the way of availing ourselves of the technology that might save our grandchildren. So, within reason, I think that's what we're talking about. What is, what is within reason to require in a zoning code? And what, how do we, how do we open the door sufficiently for people to avail themselves of this, of this potentially lifesaving technology? We can't slam the door on that. Can't. So, we can, we can ask, we can ask that the technology be applied with discretion. I think that's what we're talking about. And that's why I was delighted to find in my, in my shallow research that the precision of alignment with the heavenly orbs was not so important as I had assumed it to be. That's really good news.
Which might explain why I've been seeing panels on north-facing roofs, which I found astounding. I mean, I chalk that up to snake-on salesman.
For alcohol.
Yeah, selling, selling a product to a fully-unformed consumer, but maybe north-facing panels do actually have some use.
Because you figure the sun does go around pretty far.
Well, it's still light. If you have a north-facing window, light comes into the room.
Well, I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit, but it's...
But once upon a time, you would have never considered putting a panel on a north roof.
That's why I think, you know, so it seems like we're not gonna make that much more progress tonight. I think, you know, if, I don't know that there is a solution, but I am thinking like, you know, it's, they should be mounted flush to the roof unless, if there were criteria, it would probably be something like, unless there's a gain of fifty percent or more in efficiency from an alternate angle or, you know, some kind of metric, that they, it's on the applicant to prove that they should be allowed to mount them at some other angle. I don't know.
Well, tonight, the only place we were expecting to get was to find out my questions we probably need to answer, or we might get that.
Are you, what are your questions? So, is this regulation limited to the angle of the roof? Or could, is there a question of having solar panels that are, that exceed the roof, you know, in one direction or more? Is that possible?
Like having really big overhanging panels?
Yeah.
I don't think so. You, by code, you're not allowed to have that extension over a roof. In fact, you have to have a three-foot walkway around wherever solar panels are.
Oh, really? Okay. Watch for that.
We also talked about last time whether or not it's visible from the street. So, like, if it's on top of a flat building and you can't see it, it doesn't really matter.
Currently, that's our goal, cannot be visible from the street. Well, I'm not interested, I mean, I'm really just trying to get a sense of whether you feel like we need to gather more information before we craft this. I think that's getting you all out of the, out of the efficiency.
Personally, I don't think we do. I think, as we, as I mentioned on Saturday, I think the reason why we wrote a Form Based Code was to preserve the form of the buildings. And, well, you asked me, do I think there is any more reason? For me, no. I think the Form Based criteria is strong enough to say that we're responding to the, to the needs and desire of many people to have them, but by having them flat up against the roof, responds to that desire and need, but also responds to the whole, you know, basis of the Form Based Code. So for me, that would put, put an end to it, but I recognize that's probably the minority view.
No, I'm okay with that.
Well, you know, I was, at the council meeting Thursday, I was directly asked by a council member to keep looking at this because that council member is getting feedback from the community that the rule we have now is genocidal in terms of putting solar panels up. So, I don't know the evidence of that at all. That might be more evidence we wanna collect. If someone's having trouble putting a solar panel up, maybe we should hear why. So it feels like if council is interested in asking us, then we have to go back and either find out whether or not our initial approach to this was correct or whether it needs to be adjusted.
It can't hurt to find out, Todd.
So that's why.
I will say that, anecdotally at least, there are, solar panel salesmen are becoming like aluminum siding salesmen forty years ago.
That's the reference I was gonna make. Team man. So, let's follow those channels. Does anyone else have any kind of channels you can use to help gather? You mentioned the Google Maps, Jim, is there anyone else? Chloe, is there any resource you can point us towards that's kind of a dispassionate resource on this topic, not like?
I had a conversation with someone who formerly worked at PHMC, the state Historic Preservation Organization, about this. I look at my notes and I'm gonna ask them again, the person who's currently the eastern part of Pennsylvania Community Planner for Historic Preservation Services for the state, for any thoughts or ideas on this topic. I have a neighbor who does solar moved, never mind. I had a neighbor who did solar installations, but they left, actually. And then, I mean, it sounds like it would be worth asking, your code enforcement officer, has Kevin gotten applications for people wanting to put in solar that did not need this code and he had to turn them down? I don't mind asking you that in any way.
Sure, that's another good data point, is Kevin Walsh getting input on this. If people are coming to get Walsh and getting turned down, then maybe it's not a good show.
I'll ask Kevin if that's been happening with the way your current code is right now. Google Solar Project Summit is really cool.
Let's, so let's keep looking at it. In one of our next meeting or two, we'll bring back information and see if there's a reason to revisit this. I wanna just say, I appreciate everyone's sort of willingness to kind of look at this with carefulness. And I do, I do think to be responsive to the community, we should double-check our map and make sure we're right, or figure out whether there's something that needs to be amended, so. The only, I think, next item in my business is, Chloe, you had asked to make a presentation to us. If I'm correct? Yes, the last item in my business is the MCPC report on the CPACE program.
Okay, I'm excited about this, because this can be very short and it's gonna be interesting. So, I'm gonna share a presentation from my computer, so if you want to, you can go on the screen. Here's what you need to know about what I'm about to tell you. I am not in charge of this program, it is not run out of my office. We are supportive of it, we know some things about it, but if you ask me detailed questions, I'm gonna send you to somebody else. So what is CPACE? It's a state financing tool that was put in place to allow for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements and water conservation improvements, both to new buildings and to existing buildings. It can provide up to a hundred percent of financing for anything that can be tied in any way to renewable energy, energy efficiency, or water conservation. And the way it works is that it's tied to the building, not to the person. So it's not the developer exactly that gets the loan. It's put with the building and it gets paid back gradually over a long period of time, usually. And it comes on the property tax bill from the county, so it's the county tax collector that gets it. The developers who have used this have loved it because it's basically almost like free money for them, that they don't really have to pay back and they can use it towards, oh, they just say, oh, I'm getting energy-efficient windows for my building, I'm gonna use CPACE money for that. I'm getting like, I mean, anything that can be tied to energy efficiency. So, it's a great tool to refer people to.
Basically, it's a loan that you pay back, they're incrementing your property tax. So what is the interest rate?
All I know is that it's a very competitive interest rate. And I don't have more information than that. It can be applied retroactively for any project that was completed within the last two years. And it links improvements to the building and the future tenants, rather than to the developer.
Those solar panels didn't like cable parallel to the roof.
I'm not fucking that.
CPACE doesn't care.
You can't walk around properly.
No.
Okay, so, any non-residential projects...
That one either, oh my god.
Any non-residential project can use CPACE, as well as residential projects with five or more units. There were some, that was a change to the enabling legislation that the state legislature enacted in July of this year. There were some questions about whether the county has to amend their CPACE resolution, and the upshot from emails today was that actually they don't, and it's eligible now for any multi-family project of five or more units or any non-residential project at all. So that's a lot of things. You can't use it for your own private, personal home, but a lot of, most new construction projects. So, it's private banks, but the state has partnered with a bunch of lending institutions and there's this that you just choose from, and that's pretty much the whole story. Oh, right, so, so, all kinds of things that you might think, including green roofs, automation of heating and cooling systems to make things more efficient, building envelope improvements, all kinds of things that can be used, including on historic buildings, and it has been used for that as well. Water conservation, most stormwater projects are not eligible. However, if you're using the stormwater for something, like you have some sort of capture and reused flusher toilets or something, that could be eligible. And then, a lot of soft costs are eligible, sign and engineering, permitting, legal fees, energy surveys or assessments related, anything that can be tied to any of these energy efficiency, renewable energy, or water conservation projects. So, we've been, our office has been asked to please share information about this with municipalities so that you know you can mention it to applicants, or your friends, your neighbors, anyone who might be eligible to use it. Again, not for a private, single-family home, but anyone who owns a non-residential building can use it for any kind of upgrades. And we've seen really small projects, really big projects. It's relatively new, so there are a ton of things, but that...
Five, five units or more?
Five units or more, or anything that's non-residential. It can be used for government buildings, if the line of financing to use anything on a used building. And this is run out of the county redevelopment authorities' office, and so, any complicated questions that I don't know the answer to, or simple questions that I don't know the answer to?
Governments don't pay tax on their buildings, do they?
Correct. And that has come up, and I think the answer was that they get something that looks like a tax bill every year when they send out the tax bills, and they have to just pay it off. So, property tax.
It's your volunteer, is it?
Quickly, yes. And I do have a little handout for you about the Sora West project. There was a project recently completed in Conshohocken called Sora West. This is a very big project, bigger than you'd see in Narbor, but I thought you might be interested anyway. Because it talks about exactly what, what was more efficient. See what kinds of things they did with the money and... So, there is a historic building on the site that they maintain, and then a bunch of new construction. So they use the finances, it's just a stage of example. So this is this Conshohocken project, there's a public green, there's a historic building, there's new construction.
Oh, is that the firehouse of historic building?
Yeah, the private building.
So, do you ever have contact with the Narbor Industrial Development Authority?
No, I haven't, yeah.
You might want to contact them, I mean, I'm aware of this. I don't really know what they're financing these days, but they tend to finance these kinds of things. Even when they ever do. It's a quirky little organization.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you aware, are there, have there been any projects in Narbor?
I have not.
No, no.
No projects in Narbor so far that have used CPACE. But I'm sure one is coming soon. Lower Marion, I'm not sure.
Certainly, you can't win with anything eligible in Narbor, I could be a winner.
Right, I mean, it's related in some ways to some of the things that, some of the conversations around being built in, where, you know, maybe the borough can offer financing or something, I think you can just refer them to this program, it was already...
Everything, single-family home, small family homeowners.
It's right. Right.
That's right. But what would stop the borough from doing this for homeowners?
Nothing.
I mean, I wonder why not? I mean, the borough could do something.
That's interesting.
Well, you need the capital to pay for it and get it back through the property taxes. So, perhaps you could tweet, you should ask council about this, or ask the borough manager about that.
Yeah.
Because you're only in Narbor, that's, all of our wins are in small houses.
Right.
And we all know, our houses could use as much of this as they can get.
Yes.
And that financing mechanism certainly is favorable to homeowners.
That's great.
Yeah, if I could get a loan and pay it off over forty years through my property tax, I would seriously consider it.
Right, and you can see why developers like... Right, and you can see why developers like it, it's like, if they don't even see it again, they never...
If we can engineer this for houses, there's probably some law that says we can't.
It's free money.
Well, thank you. Is there any public comment tonight? Any public comment out there?
There was a comment in the chat.
Oh, really? What was that?
It's from somebody from left.
I didn't realize anyone was joining, I was trying to watch.
Louise Doosan, oh, she was here for most of the meetings, and she's just said, some time ago, I spoke to a person in Doston Borough, and she said that there were concerns about fire hazards. Is that even an issue anymore?
About solar panels?
I believe so.
Well, anyone we know about that would be our crack fire department. Can ask how many calls they've responded to, to solar panels.
Might be the batteries, power wall.
What's that?
Might be the batteries, power wall. I mean, I don't think there's anything in a solar panel that could catch on fire, it would be the battery pack.
Okay. There being no public comment, I would like to add one item to the agenda with everyone's permission, which is, I'd like to acknowledge that tonight is Jim Spears' last meeting with us, and...
We've heard that before.
It's a moment that she let go and recognized.
Got a punch, Dave.
I keep checking.
Is it really though? I mean, I said I would stay until I got replaced.
We're going to call this your last meeting, because they're our applicants.
There are.
It's the penultimate meeting.
Antipenultimate.
We don't, we don't want to, it's our chance to feed you.
We've talked you out of this before. What are the chances this time?
It's a good, it's a good time to leave. I just want to know who's going to handle the IT before the meetings.
I don't know. Maybe I'll have to sit in audience.
Well, beyond that, Jim, beyond the IT, over the years, you have contributed more than I would have imagined you could. You're not trained in some of these areas, you did it tonight.
Thank you.
Come up with stuff that the rest of us miss.
And still you're like...
When I was chair, I appreciated it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I second that. You brought a really, really valuable perspective, that those of us who euphemistically call ourselves professionals in this stuff often miss, and I think it was really, really a valuable thing to have at the table, and thank you for that. And also, a rigor on some of these things that I often glazed over, and you kind of zeroed in on numbers and things like that, that helped, helped the discussion along.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Keep it in touch.
We've been watching.
It's only been 10 years, come on.
Oh, my gosh, someone asked me.
Seriously?
Yep. Jim, you've been an invaluable ally, you really have, but not just for the reasons these folks have cited, but because of your kind of doggedness and persistence, and the hours I've spent with you crunching numbers on things just to get them right. I, that, that I don't know how to replace, but it's more, it's more you that I don't know how, how to replace. I, too, as, as Jim said, as chair, think you've, you've played an enormous and integral role here, and, and I can't imagine, we'll find people who contribute a lot, but I can't imagine I will find people who contribute when you do. And that's why we will remember, we will see you all the time around town, but that is why we will remember you here. And I have brought you a gift, a parting gift, from my library, two books that I think you will, you'll enjoy. They speak to the spirit of loving the place where you live, and if nothing else, that's what you exemplify, which is loving this place and all the things you do. If you fight with treaty mission, with stuff I don't even know you do, being here, and so I hope those will inspire you as you continue to work on behalf of our community.
Thank you, thanks so much. This is lovely. Fantastic.
What book's mine?
I love where you live.
It was For Love Cities.
Okay.
After reading those, you might consider reapplying to the planning.
Remaking cities.
When you try to get on from home for the next meeting, and you can't because nobody's on the list, it'll be your fault.
All right, that's Peter. Thank you for all you guys talk, including Becky. He does so many things that inspire me. All right, can I have my motion, dear adjour?
I shall move.
Second.
I shall move.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great holiday season, folks. Be prepared for, you're going to have a busy week, so rest up.